Twenty twenty five, please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
We show all members of council present. Up next, we have review of the minutes from the June 4th, twenty twenty five meeting and the June 9th, twenty twenty five regular meetings, as well as the June 18th, twenty twenty five budget meeting. Any questions, comments, concerns by council? Hearing none, proceeding forward. Council member's statements regarding conflicts of interest on agenda items. Would anybody like to make a statement today? Hearing none, also proceeding forward. Public comment pertaining to agenda and non-agenda items. If you would like to make a specific agenda item comment, please sign up with the city clerk, and you'll be asked to come forward at the appropriate time. If not, the floor is open for public and non-agenda, for public agenda and non-agenda items, if anybody would like to make comment.
Good afternoon, good evening. My name is Change, I'm Kenyatta McGrew. It's good to see you guys again, I've been out a little bit. I just have some questions about your city policies on your hiring process, and what that looks like. We've had this conversation for a while now, as far as your applicants, and as far as the application process, if you interview all of your applicants, or how that looks. I had that conversation sometime back, maybe about a year and a half ago, as to how that went. I've never really gotten a response from that, and I'm here today because I actually applied for a position here, and I did not receive an interview. So I'm here today to ask your policy on how you interview your respective candidates for positions.
But there's two different employees, there's appointed employees and there's regular employees. The regular employees would be the administrative staff in the front office, would be your DPW workers, your police officers, stuff like that. However, we also have appointed employees, which would be the city manager, the clerk, economic development, planning zoning, the chief, everything like that. So for the appointed positions, the ultimate appointee is the mayor. I mean, the mayor puts the position up, the council votes on it. As far as the actual process of what that looks like, that's left up to the chief executive, which means for an appointed position, you don't even have to put it out, for instance, you can just appoint. For the regular employees, we do post that out, the DPW works and everything like that, and those interviews are conducted by the clerk and the city manager. For the appointed positions, those interviews are conducted by the mayor, and basically whichever staff he chooses to help in the interviews, if they do do interviews. So for the economic development position, for instance, it was me, the city manager, and an economic development worker over in Westminster, and they were the ones that gave the feedback on the different candidates. As far as how the people chosen for the interviews was done, it was basically done on the work experience that they've done in economic development, and I think four of nine applicants, Jim, were chosen for interview? And I think those four interviews alone took five hours, probably?
The young man that got the position, did you interview him?
We did.
Okay, because when I had some conversation with Mr. Retrick, I was told that the person that they were selected did not need an interview, wasn't necessary. And then I heard you just also say that the person who is interviewed for those positions is selected by city council, but I didn't hear you say city council voted on that position.
So city council votes on it, the actual selection is made by the mayor.
Did you vote on it?
City council did, yes.
On the individuals?
They did, yes. That would have been in May. But the actual position itself, as far as the appointments go, the council doesn't have appointment authority. They don't make appointments. They have the authority to confirm appointments, but that's basically where that rests. And, you know, when council's looking at confirming an appointment made by an executive, for instance, the number one thing they basically should be looking out for is malicious intent with the appointment, stuff like that. But other than that, as far as the details of who the appoint, who the appointed person is, that's really left up to the executives and the appointment process. But for instance, council can't dictate the actual appointment criteria, they can't dictate the appointment process. They could say what they'd like to see, they could say how they'd like it to go, but the actual appointing power rests with the chief executive in the city of Tonny Town. So while I do have to present all appointments for confirmation, the process to get to that appointment is left up to the discretion of administration.
And then you mentioned malicious intent?
It'd be like, I shouldn't have said malicious intent, maybe. Let's say the mayor wanted to appoint his brother to a position, for instance. That was why the council kind of exists. That would be something that they should say, no, we're not appointing it based on XYZ, but...
Your wife is on the council?
She is, she ran for an elected position.
Yeah, she did a good job.
Thank you.
I'm glad she's here. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add a quick point of clarification with regard to the EDC position, there was a shift in how that position was going to be filled, because initially...
Initially, and an appointment back in January.
There was not going to be a, an advertisement and an interview process originally. There was, you were seeking candidates as a more of a solo effort, and council requested that we post the position and go through a process. So for that position, the process did change as it went along.
It did. And again, those processes can change as well, it's really left up to the flexibility and discretion of the administration. But it's kind of the same thing as, what it really comes down to is council confirms, mayor nominates, that's the appointment process. As far as what that looks like, who's interviewing, that's not, staff doesn't get to direct that, council doesn't direct that, I direct it. So even when it came to the interviews, again, it was based on the criteria of how they met that economic development role.
I'm glad that he brought me back up, because I do have a question to say that if you're going to have someone who is in the best interest of the town, why not start from within?
And we did, we interviewed applicants that lived in Tonny Town.
Is there a particular reason I wasn't interviewed?
Just based on work experience.
How did you come to arrive at that?
I looked over the applications for the EDC role, and just based on how I felt the economic development role was in Tonny Town, there were four people who met that criteria of what I was looking for.
So maybe later you can share with me what you were looking for, because I did have Jim send me the actual position posting for the job description, and I did not see that, what you're saying now. So I'd like to share that with you maybe after the meeting today?
That'd be fine.
Or make an appointment with you, whichever one works best.
After the meeting should be fine, I got time.
Okay, okay, thank you.
No problem, thank you. Any additional public comment pertaining to agenda or non-agenda items? Hearing none, proceeding forward. Resolution ordinances and agreements. Up for adoption this week, we have an annexation resolution zero four A dash twenty twenty five, Sabal thirty-three hundred Harney Road. Additional comments, questions, concerns by council?
What's the backstory on this one?
Jim, do you want to go into it real quick?
So this is a single-family house, existing dwelling on Harney Road, had a failing septic system. The health department wanted them to connect to the city's sewer system, and in order to do that, they have to be within the city limits. So in order for them to connect and get rid of the failing septic system, they had to annex. So we've held the public hearing on the annexation, there were no comments at that time on it, so passing the resolution is just the final step, well, the final council step in it, then we have some administrative stuff to do afterwards, but Monday night, that's just up for a final vote, so...
How far outside were they, were they?
It's, so they were between the Sewell Farm and West Baltimore Street. So the last house before you get to the Sewell Farm on the left, if you're heading out of town.
Three or four other houses in that line that are not, that have not annexed yet.
Correct.
And they are, the rest of those houses are on sewer, city sewer?
Yes.
So we really, you know, I know we've had this discussion, but I think we ought to try to pursue that now, since we've getting close to enclaving those houses, we ought to just fix that. But this one was such a pain in the butt, because of all the survey lines, there were issues with the...
Yes, this did take a long time, because until, until the property was surveyed, we were not aware, it was not actually contiguous to the city, that, you know, from, from the lines on GIS and the zoning maps and everything, it appeared to be contiguous to the Sewell Farm, but there was actually a small strip of land that belongs to the farm behind that, that ran between that house and the Sewell property. That property owner was cooperative and agreed to annex that ten-foot wide strip of land, so that this house would be considered contiguous to the city.
That was my next question, whether it was an island unto itself, or...
Right, right. And it kind of was, because it actually didn't even, there was another little strip of land between the house and Harney Road that wasn't part of the house's property. So again, it was part of the farm behind it, so again, the owner was cooperative, so they allowed a little L-shaped sliver to come in, so that now the house that we're annexing, and the little sliver between that and Harney Road, and the little sliver between that and the Sewell Farm, will all be part of the city now.
Okay. I'm surprised that the, the property owner in the back didn't just convey those over to the buyer of the new, of the house, or to the owner of the house, that, you know, it seems to me that would have simplified matters, but...
It, it may have lengthened the process, though, at the same time, so...
But yeah, this has been coming for a while.
Yeah, we've had this on the docket for a bit.
It was sheer curiosity on my part.
Oh yeah, no, I didn't...
Any additional comments, questions, concerns by council? Hearing none, proceeding forward. Resolution twenty twenty five dash fifteen, water allocation for July. Comments, questions, concerns by council? Hearing none, proceeding forward. City manager report, Jim, what do you got for us tonight?
Not a whole lot. The, as far as capital equipment, the back truck was delivered, they've already used it on some targeted excavation. We're very pleased with, with the effect of this, it shortened their job, you know, dramatically, to be able to do that excavation with the hydraulic equipment. The planning commission's ongoing with their comprehensive plan efforts, but no, no updates as far as code revisions right now. Robert Smell Road still in a holding pattern, special counsel Gallow is digging in a little bit more on that to try to find specific contact information, so he can maybe reach out to an individual rather than just the bond company in general. So that's ongoing.
Is Mr. Lotter completely folded up at this point, or they, is there anything?
Yeah, they're, they're gone, yeah.
So there's no one left there to talk to, and now have to deal with the bonding company?
Yes, yep. Let's see.
Company that went bankrupt, right?
Correct, yes.
The one that did Robert Smell and Fairview, right, too?
Broad. And, and Fairground.
And Fairground, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. The, on the stormwater front, the contract for the Riffles Lane storm drain replacement was sent off to the contractor, so waiting for that to come back from them, and then we'll have the mayor sign it. Sewer rehab is, is wrapped up. We got the last, the grading permits are closed, they've, contractor's gotten their final paycheck, so that project is considered closed, and it'll drop off next month. Westview Drive is going really well. The section three of the water line that runs from Pump House out to York Street, goes along Westview, up Church Street, and across Robert's Mill, has been connected, so it was pressure tested, bacteria tested, all that went well, so it was connected just in the last day or so. So the service lines will be connected now for the, I think there's about ten or eleven properties that are served by that section of the line. So the project is moving along well, probably is going to be finished within the next month, weather permitting. So of course, they will need to do the, the roadwork, and we've discovered during the excavation of, of the street, that, that some of the streets were not built to a proper specification, that it's basically just blacktop on dirt. So we are going to...
Rocked.
We are going to do a change order and do a full-depth reconstruction of the areas that were not properly built to begin with, because we don't want to pay to mill an overlay on a road that doesn't have a proper base, because it's going to fail in the, you know, not-too-distant future. So we may as well just invest the extra money now and build it, so it'll last. So that change order's going to be coming in the not-too-distant future, so we'll report on that after we have the numbers next month. Let's see. I think that's about it as far as the written report, and... That's all I've got, unless anybody has questions.
Questions, comments, concerns for the city manager? Hearing none, looking for questions, comments, concerns on department reports, anybody got those before I proceed forward?
Just a quick question on the Memorial Park expansion. I know we've been waiting forever for Arrow to come back on sidewalk, that's having, having the problem, and they still haven't, even though we've been asking them to figure something out for a while. What are, what are we doing about that, because that's potentially jeopardizing eight, nine-hundred-thousand dollars in grant funding, right?
So there was some email communication on that. Arrow has submitted a revised plan to State Highway, and they advised today that they've been working with addressing comments, but now the comments are going beyond stormwater on the sidewalk again. So State Highway is, it, it sounds like expanding their comments, adding new comments on things that aren't relative to the immediate matter at hand. So, so Arrow is making the effort, but that's what it sounds like.
But Arrow is working through it.
Yes.
Right now, it's back to the state process.
So we haven't officially pulled the plug on it yet, though.
And they did remove the sidewalk, or no, I didn't catch that?
No, no, this is, this is our last attempt to try to keep the sidewalk. So Arrow came up with a design revision, submitted it to State Highway, State Highway commented, and they're working through those comments, but it sounds like State Highway is, I can pull up the email real quick.
No, you don't, you don't have to give exactly...
State Highway is expanding their...
In, you know, the very first thing of...
Like a stormwater management thing, because of increased impervious area, is that what this is about?
Is that what it is, Jim, stormwater on the sidewalk?
Yeah.
Because of the increased impervious area, they require a bigger pond, yada, yada, yada?
It is like a miniscule amount over the threshold for which State Highway requires the stormwater to be addressed, and they were not, you know, they're not able to be flexible on that particular aspect.
Not really, no.
And, so, but again, it, it sounds like right now State Highway is kind of expanding the scope of their comments to go beyond the, you know, the, the stormwater relative to the sidewalk. So we, we really would love to see the sidewalk go in.
Yeah, I mean, we, we want it to be walkable and all that. I'm, I've just been concerned since I found out about this, that it's holding up, you know, nearly a million dollars in grant funding for this project, which is a problem. So, okay.
Also, also in Parks and Rec, is there, is there any update on the...
Randy turtles?
The moat, no, not the Randy turtles. The Randy turtles are fine. They're off being Randy somewhere else now. The fountain, do we have any update on, on getting the fountain fixed? Because as of the report, it says it's not. I haven't walked around to see whether it was or not.
I thought she mentioned something. My understanding is they're adding additional safeguard to the fountain, correct, Jim?
I will, I will find out and have some detail Monday.
They're going to build a new cage around it.
Yeah, so they're building a new cage, because what keeps happening, basically, to my understanding is that, is it sucking things in, it didn't have anything protecting, like the motor, so things are getting stuck and it's grinding up the motor, motor burns out, so they've got to build like a protective cage around it.
Okay, yeah, it just, it had the same comment as before, so I just...
And my understanding is...
Again, sheer curiosity.
You're not going to see it come back on until that's built, because we'll just see...
Yep, yeah, that's right.
They got that going on.
Understandable.
No comments, questions, concerns on department? Hearing none, proceeding forward. New business monthly financial report, question, comments, concerns by council? Hearing none, proceeding forward. Accounts payables, question, comments, concerns by council? Hearing none, proceeding forward. Appointment of information technology officer. Would someone like to make a motion just to knock this out, or do we have questions, comments, concerns for it? This is basically just putting them into that IT officer role. We can do a motion on that tonight, if anybody wants to make it.
Just so I understand, this is just formalizing Dan being the head of the IT department?
Yep, per the new ordinance.
Motion to approve, adopt, what kind of motion are you looking for?
Motion to appoint.
Point, motion to appoint.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Any additional comments, questions, concerns by council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That is confirmed. Heading down, Copperfield Stormwater System Inspection Services Proposal. Questions, comments, concerns by council?
Just the one from Pleasance here at the end of the, at the end of the packet?
Yes.
Hearing nothing. I have a couple of things to hit on before we adjourn for the night. First would be some of the items from the one-hundred-and-eighty-day resolution, I just want to give an update on it. The review on city street specifications to support traffic, common possession, and safety in smarter growth, we should be seeing a first draft on Monday on the administration side. Once we've either made comments or it's looking good, we'll get that sent out to council to prepare, to look at it, and make any motions or adoptions in August. Next up, and I just wanted to iterate, the first month that we counted for the one-hundred-and-eighty-day resolution was June as being the first month, the second being July, mainly because May was when all those were adopted and everything like that. Next up, we have a funding commitment framework, municipal advertising, and support local newspaper. We've been working with the Edmondsburg Journal, we, or I met with them a week ago, and there's going to be a follow-up meeting with some additional stakeholders, like the Chamber of Commerce, and they're reaching out to some of the industry around town for support. And then we have the city attorney requirements, that was accomplished in May. And then we have the ninety days, the establishment of Main Street Committee Framework. Bob Jones, the Economic Development Director, he has started working on that. He has an initial kind of form of our idea of what the committee should look like, as far as some of the people goes and whatnot. It is going to be, we're looking at first establishing it as an ad hoc committee, and we're going to present the framework of what that looks like to council, but we're not going to ask for an adoption on that framework. We're going to let them meet a couple of times as an ad hoc, frame that framework, notice any kind of, any changes we have to make, and then once we have that framework kind of solid, solidified and ready to go, we're going to present it for adoption by council. That way we can kind of knock out any trouble spots without having to come back to council over and over again. For instance, you know, the last one...
How are the people going, going to be appointed to this ad, or get put on this ad hoc committee?
So ad hoc, you don't have to make, you don't have to make appointments for. They'll just basically be the, I know Bob has been looking at candidates, we'll put people on it, we'll put it as an ad hoc. If everything's meshing well, the committee's doing well, we're going to put the, basically, we're going to put the framework in, and then we're going to start nomination process.
So the, the ad hoc is almost like a testing period, to make sure that people aren't...
Like a pilot program.
And realistically, any future committees we're going to be looking at, we're going to pilot first, make sure it's meshing well, we got a good framework, and then present it for adoption. That way, we can actually work with it, we can mold it a little bit better. And that should help us really come up with something that's going to work and is kind of future-proof.
Under the, under the affiliate designation, do we need to have a board, or can we ride on for a bit and create a board in order to try to step back up?
We can be in the process of forming a board, that's my understanding.
Right, the aspiring designation is, is basically a two-year program to build the program back up. So at the end of that two years, we'll be expected to have everything in place, but we have time to build it.
And some talks, you know, with the city manager, I'm hoping to have this wrapped up in a year, as far as the solidified framework goes. Again, we're going to present what the initial framework looks like to council, probably get a consensus, hey, yeah, this looks good, let's go ahead and start piling it, and then we'll go from there. But we're not going to put anything in hard code or anything like that until we have an actual working committee. Again, we don't want to have to go back through what we did last time, which was code adjustments and everything like that. We want to make sure it's working functionally before we put it into hard code.
What is this aspiring thing that you just brought up?
So there's two designations in the new Main Street program, there's an aspiring, and what's the other one, Jim?
There's designated, aspiring, and affiliate.
So we went down to aspiring because we didn't meet the criteria to make it for this next year, so we could have kept riding it now, but they would have basically downgraded us in January, and that's a conversation we have with DHCD on the phone. So we just went ahead and went to the affiliate program, so we can start working on it, and send our Economic Development Director to the training that is part of the aspire program. But basically, it's a buildup program to get you back on track on the Main Street program. So it's a two-year buildup, we can't go back to where we were before until that two-year aspiring buildup is complete, from my understanding. Is that correct, Jim? I thought you have to go through the full two years.
That's my understanding.
Yep. I will just make council aware, I think, I can't remember if we talked about this, but during the call with DHCD, one of the things they are looking for, not from the aspiring, but to go to the next level, is the designated, they, whoever is the Main Street manager, they want it to be a full-time position. They want it to be thirty-five hours, and even if it's thirty-five hours, that last five hours shouldn't be used for anything else. They want it to be used strictly for Main Street. So it'd be a position completely dedicated to Main Street. That's something council should sit on and think about for a little bit, but they want that position basically a hundred percent dedicated to Main Street, if you're going to do the position. And that's something that strikes us as a little odd on the administrative side, because that is definitely different than what we've seen and how we've seen others do it.
Yeah, it's a different interpretation than the way it's been for the last umpteen years.
And I think there are very few Main Streets that have a truly dedicated...
Right, so I'm wondering, I'm wondering what the enforcement of that is going to look like, because, you know, almost no one actually meets that.
The, the problem is going to be, we're under a microscope currently, so there's going to be tighter enforcements on it.
From the, the model.
Other than that, and again, what that basically means is we're not going to get that twenty-five thousand a year to put back into the position. We still get our other facade grants and everything like that, that's ran through a separate program, but the main thing is going to be that twenty-five thousand that you're able to put towards either hiring or the program or whatever. That's what that designation is.
And part of that two-year idea is that we can create, build in, build in the funding mechanisms that are necessary to fund that position.
Yep.
Whether that's...
And I can't remember if the, I can't remember if the new council's been here for that, but the ideal mechanism from what we've talked about with DHCD is one-third city funding, one-third private partnership, private donations and whatnot, and one-third just regular fundraising.
So would this be an additionally created position in your mind, if we, if we move to that?
To be honest with you, after talking with the city manager, I will more than likely, when we get to the point, it'd be a presentation of either a more dedicated full-time Main Street manager, and then a part-time economic development. But that's going to be something we're going to have to look at down the road, because that's going to be, it really just depends on where the Main Street Committee goes from here, what that fundraising looks like, what money they're able to get together, because we do have to be mindful and fair to our other industries in the city.
That's, that's where I was going, yeah.
That's a, that's a big commitment for one section.
Yeah.
And again, you know, you can make the case that that section does help the other sections, but I, you know, it does feel disadvantaged, it feels a little wrong when, you know, when we're looking at our other industries, like EvacCo's, the Flow Service, where all of our jobs are located, to take an Economic Development Director from them to work with.
Yeah.
So we'll have to, we'll have more talks about it in the future, but we'll continue working towards it. We'll see what the committee can come up with, we'll see what they can fund. And again, if everything's looking good, and they're, they're able to get their funding, people are chipping in, things are looking good, I mean, there's a potential that if we can match that one-third and it funds a position, then we can look at doing that. But we do have to be mindful of what that looks like in the future, but that's...
That, that person doesn't have to be necessarily a city employee. If the program itself can fund that position, that could be funded by the program and be an employee of the program, not necessarily the city.
A nonprofit or an NGO of some kind, right?
That is correct.
What you're thinking, yeah.
Right.
Right, essentially, in, in Main Street, America is like an NGO, so, and, and that's kind of the model that they, they like to see operating.
My, my only understanding, though, is that the committee has to be ran by the NGO. My understanding is the committee has to be ran by the NGO. It wouldn't, it'd be weird for us to pay a outside person to run a city organization. But again, part of what we've talked about in the past is, is when this committee is actually fully functional, ready to go, we believe it's, we believe the city's commitment is going to be spent wisely, it can split off. And as we go through the framework, we're going to build a mechanism for it to split off in the future, to where that can be utilized by that board when they feel it's right, and when the council feels it's right. So expect to see that in the framework, maybe not this initial one, but in the final presentation of the framework, we want to make sure there is a, there is a way for that committee to split themselves, and for council to allow that split without too much, without it being really time-consuming to try to do. And we want to make sure that, again, we want to make sure that money's being spent wisely, so we want to see some results before we even get to that point.
Right, essentially, it's, it's an NGO with city oversight, you know, so that, right, so the money, that way the city's money is...
With the goal of splitting it also, it's completely independent.
Right, but with oversight, to make sure the money is being spent in, in, but the public money that's being put into it is being spent in a, you know, in a...
A wise way, yeah.
And technically, for instance, like a Chamber of Commerce could do it, and the city could designate the Chamber of Commerce as the NGO that's running it. But when it comes down to, when we actually have to do the split, basically, the city has to designate what group is that Main Street Committee, because we are still, we're still ultimately in charge of Main Street in Tonny Town.
Buck stops with us no matter what, as far as their... Buck stops with us no matter what as far as they're concerned.
Even if someone made a group today, they built it all up and we're like, well, we want, we want all this, they couldn't do that without the city saying, yes, we have designated you as the group running the Main Street program. My understand, that's my understanding of it.
In Maryland, the Main Street program is always an agreement between DHCD and the local government. So, the local government does have the opportunity to source it to another organization, but the local government is always responsible at DHCD to meet the criteria of the program. So, if and when we get to that point, you know, we'll have to develop an agreement with, you know, if there is a, you know, a board that is, has demonstrated that they can function autonomously, you know, the city could turn the reins over to them with an agreement saying, you know, just like we're agreeing with the state that we will do these things, now we'll say, okay, this organization is going to do these things for the program, for the city, so that they're obligated to now to meet those same criteria that we are.
Right, and we're basically saying we're hands-off unless you give us a reason not to be hands-off.
Right, yeah.
And I will say with the, again, one of the biggest things is just to make sure when we go to do that, and this is future thinking, you know, it might be good that we stipulate that there's an ex officio on that board from the city, whether that be whoever the liaison is for economic development or whatever, there should be an ex officio when that does separate from the city still. Because again, we are ultimately responsible for the oversight. But again, that's future thinking. Anyways, going back down the list, the signs for Welcome to Tawny Town, we had some initial talks for that. I think we're still on track with that. It's not going to be too time-consuming or a big of a venture. Next up, we have the Charter Code Language for Term Limits. Well, you guys will more than likely see that in September. Acquisition Plan for Way Stop Trucks, including officer training, compliance procedures. The city manager and the chief are going to be working on that, still expected to be September. So, the 90 days is the September meeting essentially. We're still, basically still expecting everything on the 90 days to be in September, except maybe the training, training plan and budget for committees, that might be October, because that's going to be a little bit more robust and we're digging into it. The draft legislation, after talking with the city manager, we don't think it's going to be, the draft legislation for the election reform, we don't think that's going to be too time-consuming. We're going to take some common practices from the surrounding municipalities of our size and basically implement that here. The previous...
They don't have to reinvent the wheel there.
The previous election criteria for the campaign finance and whatnot, that was based on the states, basically what the state does for their elections. So, we're looking to kind of dial that back to what municipalities are using. Again, there shouldn't be four different forms you're filling out every two to three days or every week, every other week. It needs to be simplified so people don't feel challenged when they go to run for these positions. Again, other than that, on the 90-day things, everything's still looking good for September, except for maybe that training plan and budget. On the 30 days, you guys will see the street specs in August and hopefully the local newspaper stuff in August as well. That's still being worked out. It's really, it's not just us on that part, you know, it's working with partners like the Emmitsburg Journal, it's working with the industries for support. So, everything's still coming along there. Next up, I wanted to talk about the 250th anniversary. I spoke with Councilmember McCarron at the end of June and we went over how that was going to look. Councilmember McCarron is, I'm, designate him as the liaison for the 250th. He's going to be basically coordinated between the History Museum, the American Legion, the other civic organizations, nonprofits and whatnot to really make this happen. The other accessibility that I've given him is in regards to working with the 250th is he does have access to economic development and he does have access to Parks and Rec for anything related to 250th to make sure that happens without having to go through me or the city manager. So, he does have discretion to work with those, to work with those employees outside of his council role, just making sure it's getting done. In August, it might be September, but I'm going to be asking for Councilmember McCarron, the Parks and Rec and Economic Development to come back to us with maybe what a draft budget will look like, so we can go ahead and prepare to look at what that money's going to be for hosting either, well, I think, is it, everybody's on board with the parade? I think we consented on that last time. Bigger fireworks are a thing we've talked about at the city manager, so I know our fireworks were grand this year, but maybe make them a little grand for 250th and step it up a notch, you know, more.
More boomsticks.
Again, some funding for workshops around the town related to history. Again, we want to make sure it gets done, so I want to be asking them for a draft budget of what that may look like and we're going to make sure it gets in their hands to make sure they're able to accomplish the mission with funds. Thank you, thank you, Councilmember, for working on it.
I just wanted to kind of give a little bit more of an update. We have the Civil, the Heart of the Civil War Heritage Group is meeting at the Mount Airy Library on the 23rd at 1:30 to discuss how all the folks in the Heritage area can work together to promote this, our Civil War heritage during the 250th anniversary. And the meeting is open to anybody that's interested if they want to attend. So, those of you who are listening at home, if you have an interest, you may even want to attend.
And during MML, you know...
But we have our EDC manager going and our Parks and Rec Director going and anybody, I guess if you, I think several of us are going down, but anyway, I'll be attending and Councilman Tillman will be attending and anybody else that wants to go. It makes a lot of sense, the more I think about it, the better I like it. Originally, I just thought, well, if we just focus on the Civil War heritage, maybe we're going to miss something, but I don't know that that's necessarily true. I think the, you know, the reason it's called the Heart of the Civil War Heritage Trail is because we're in the heart of the Civil War. So, I think, and of course, Maryland's part of it anyway. And I think it'd be very important to emphasize that, so I'm anxious to see how that meeting goes and what direction we head, but just wanted to let everybody know that that was available and open to the, anybody who was interested.
And I will say for anybody watching in public, if you have questions, comments, concerns regarding the 250th, please reach out to Councilmember McCarron. Again, he is going to be the lead role and making sure all this happens and, great, I got faith in you. But Councilmember McCarron also serves as, you're the president of the History Museum now?
Sorry.
President of the History Museum?
Yeah.
So, again, I, he's well-equipped to make sure this happens and happens correctly. And we're going to make sure the funding happens for it. So, we'll come back with a draft budget probably in August or September of what that's going to look like.
And this will be a budget amendment, correct?
Yep, it'd be a budget amendment. So, again, and I know I've addressed this previously with the budget, but any kind of one-off stuff, special occasions and whatnot, we're going to look to start facilitating those through budget amendments. That way, the public is aware of where those funds are going rather than us just building a discretionary fund into the budget and then just using them. However, it's actually, I believe it's more transparent when you have a budget that's on the bare bones operations, that's what you're budgeting for. And then for these one-offs, you're actually presenting them before a public meeting. It does give people the opportunity to kind of critique, talk about the funding and whatnot. So, we'll make sure that happens. The 180 days is working through. And was there something else? Sorry, I'm looking at my notes here. So, there is one other thing I wanted to bring up and this is just a, the council can consent with it or just not if they, or if they want to say no, they want to keep seeing it. The water allocation resolution, we are not mandated to keep doing that. It's not a mandated thing, we don't have to keep doing that resolution. My suggestion would be instead of a resolution that's adopted every month, the actual information is just built into the DPW report every month. So, you still get the information, but you don't have to actually, again, I'm going to be honest with you, water allocation resolution doesn't do anything. There is a compliance mechanism for MDE back in the days. We've already met that, it's well done and gone.
I was going to say, you know, is this one of those things that, well, that's how we've always done it?
Well, the, it was mandated as part of a consent order and working with the Carroll County Health Department when we had some water issues many years ago. It was decided after we closed out the consent order that it was a good way to keep council informed and engaged on the status of our water supply. So, it was continued.
But it can be just like the graph we get every...
The graph gives us the status of our water supply.
And that's where I'm looking to go towards, because again, this is, it's basically an action item just to say, hey, I did an action item. This is something that could just be built in the DPW report. And again, one of the other things we're looking to build on there would be basically a projection of the last month, the current month, what it's looking like. It'll just be a little bit more detailed report rather than, rather than just a water allocation for that month. So, we're going to look towards getting that. Does council have any strong opinions on it? Because there is no actual requirement for it anymore.
We will double-check, we'll go back and look at that. Since we just had the conversation 20 minutes ago, we have really looked into that.
Actually, we had the conversation a long time ago, because I've been, I've been looking at this maybe for a little bit.
So, we'll dig back out to the, dig back out the consent order and make sure that there wasn't anything that committed us to doing that in perpetuity. But the Health Department advised years ago that, you know, we had our act together, they weren't going to be checking it anymore.
We talked about this back in 2024. I'm pretty sure, because we went back and looked at the consent order and that's what started all this. But I'm like 90% sure there's no requirement for us to do it in perpetuity. But let's do this, you know, let's have a consensus. If it's not required in perpetuity, does council mind if it just goes in the DPW report? Just shake your, or actually, give me a thumbs up, let's do a thumbs up.
Yeah, you can just put it in the, in the report just like the sewer plant, you know,